...to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, thank you for this beautiful day you've given us. God, thank you for the way our school year has started. And we thank you for all the teachers and administrators and all the hard work they've put in thus far. And God, we just pray that this year would continue to be a good year. And God, we pray tonight as we do business for the school district, that we would make good decisions, God, and do what's best for the kids. And God, I just pray that you would just be with this meeting tonight and pray that you would just bless the rest of this school year. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right, we're going to call this board meeting September 2nd, 2025 to order. Dr. Bob is out sick today and Ms. Ferguson is going to fill in for him.
All right, please be gracious. First board meeting. The second item on there is approving the meeting agenda, but I believe the date is wrong on your agenda. It should be 9/25.
Can I get a motion to further debate, second by Natalie, all in favor?
Then the third item there, same thing, the date is wrong on that one, but it's the minutes from the last board meeting, so 8/5 to be the correct date on that.
Can I get a motion to further debate, second by Natalie, all in favor?
All right, item four, hold it. Do you have that sign up sheet out there? Do we have anybody sign up on communication page? We'll check that real quick. While she's checking that, I'll move us up and we'll come back to that in just a second. So on the administrative reports, we've got our student and faculty recognition. And what we're going to do is that we're going to go through all of them. I'm going to have the principals speak about the person that they're recognizing tonight. And then we'll recognize all of those in here. And then I would like to take a small break and you all go out into the lobby and get a picture with them. That's important to us. We want you all to have a picture with each individual. So we'll take a short break for that and then we'll come back in. Any signups for that?
Yep.
Okay. No communication? Yes, we'll fix it later. Okay, so I'm going to do the first one because Bruce couldn't be here tonight. He has a cross-country meet. Does she hear Tiffany Smith? Okay, so I'm going to read what Bruce wrote about Tiffany. Tiffany goes above and beyond for everyone. She's really taking care of... Sorry. She has really taken on the responsibility of ensuring our students and staff are recognized for outstanding things going on at the school. She is an integral part of our Renaissance team and plays a vital role in our school recognition for Renaissance. Thank you, Tiffany. And I'll just add to that, that like I got to go to the Jostens Conference with them this summer and their whole team is amazing. Everybody that I went with, they all do a great job and great employees for us. So thank you for that. All right, next up, Tammy and Mike, you want to do the Students of the Month?
No. We'll start first, I guess. We're excited to recognize Riley Valines. Did not you ever come up here with us? When we were, you know, asking if, what students we would like to recognize, her teachers responded and Ms. Watkins said, "I highly recommend Riley Valines. She's a model student. She's super helpful, kind, respectful, does an amazing job on assignments." I mean, everything. "I wish I had a hundred Ryleys," is what she said. Then her science teacher said, "Riley works very hard in class. She answers many questions voluntarily." And then Mr. Taylor said, "Just this morning, we had a new student join our school and when they walked into the art class, Riley asked the teacher, 'Do you mind if I ask the student to sit with me so I can help show them things?'" And just offered to help with all the things. Also, Mr. Taylor had this to say about Riley, and I'm just going to read the whole quote because of my... "So I've had the pleasure of seeing Riley in my first period last year and now again this year. She is absolutely the type of student that you would like to be greeted by on a daily basis. Her positivity, her dedication, her kindness, her respect, and her ability to have a normal conversation with an adult truly does stand out. Her compassion also comes through and is always checking in on how we are doing as teachers. She is quick to set a good example for others to follow. In terms of character, Riley hits every mark for the type of student who will want her counsel. She takes pride in her work and pride in being a student and has a overall good opinion."
That's a good word.
All right, our Student of the Month is Huntsville High School, Yenexi Rodriguez. And I was hoping, I hope that she would make it tonight, but she hasn't quite made it. I think that's transportation issues. But Yenexi is a senior. She's in choir, international club, national honors society, and she's the soccer manager. And on top of that, she's one of our office workers. So this busy girl, very responsible girl. Her career grade point average is 4.0435. So she's incredible. Students taking a lot of AP and honors classes, be able to do that. Favorite's CrossFit, right?
No, it's Jenny.
All right. Yenexi's been here since eighth grade and she says, "Being smart and being part of the small district allows me not only to grow close with the staff, but confide in them when I feel like I'm falling behind." So she's fallen in love with Huntsville since she's been here. She's got a whole list of favorite teachers. I'm not even going to read them all, but she added Ms. Dana in the office and Ms. Armour in the library as well. So she really appreciates being a part of our high school. And she also is going to get her Bachelor's of Science in nursing. She's in our CNA program now and she plans to go on to do a Master of Science in nursing and become a nurse practitioner. And I fully believe she'll do it. So lucky, proud of her.
All right, Jennifer, Kayla, your Classified Employees?
I have the honor tonight to recognize Mrs. Abby Johnson as our Classified Employee of the Month. Abby joined us kind of late in the year, later in the school year last year. She joined our night custodial crew. And you don't hear a lot about the night custodial crew unless something doesn't get done. So it's hard to see, it was hard for me to see just how well she shines in her role until she stayed on with us through the summer. And this summer, it was, if you turned around, Abby's looking for something to do, whether it's an event that hadn't been looked at for 25 years, walls to be scrubbed down. She's always the one saying, "Come on, let's go. We can go do this." She didn't let the dust settle, I would tell you that. I'll add that Abby's the same age as my adult children and I know that some of those in that generation get a bad breath for their work ethic. And she not only works for us at night, but she's also joined our day cafeteria staff. So she, to me, is the epitome of a workhorse. And we're just so thankful to have Abby as part of our class and freshman family.
At an immediate school, it is Estelle Kirk and has a same similar story as primaries. She keeps our campus looking beautiful. She's always busy, always working, from scrubbing windows to anything. She just does it all. She's always helpful, friendly, and she's always so positive. And we just truly love her. We're thankful for her.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we're going to take a little, get a picture with each of those individuals out in the lobby. So then they can stay if they want, but you can also... All right, we're going to let Mike read his statement again. Yenexi was able to make it, so I want to make sure that she gets to hear what he had to say.
All right, Yenexi's a senior at Huntsville High School and she's in choir, international club, national honors society, and she's the soccer manager, as well as being one of our office workers. So that's incredible. Lots of AP and honors classes, grade point average up to this year, 4.0435. So that's amazing. Yenexi is taking CNA classes, wants to go on to get her Bachelor of Science in nursing. And then even further than that, wants to get a Master of Science in nursing and become a nurse practitioner, I think. It's a great group choice for her. She said, "Being part of a small school district allows me not only to grow close with the staff, but confide in them when I feel like I'm falling behind." She has a whole list of favorite teachers here. She even put Ms. Dana in the office on there and Ms. Armour in the library. So we're very proud of Yenexi and she represents our school with this.
You're welcome to say it. I just wanted to make sure that you heard all of that. All right, last item under administrative reports is the Huntsville High School handbook agenda. It should be in your faculty study. Mike, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Really not. It's just as we read, students are now, with that being true, students will be allowed to drive back and forth to classes off-campus during the school day.
Item six is the consent agenda. I believe most of that is under the initiatives that the Bonnet... Item seven is our academic report. I want to pass it to you, Paul.
Yes, so do you have this handout, the colorful one? There's some on the table if you guys didn't get it. Okay, I want to thank Bruce.
While they're getting there, keep forgetting to say this, but thank you to Ms. Goodman's class. I had that right at the top of my notes and I forgot to say it. But thank you for the dinner tonight. Hope you all enjoyed that. And her class did a great job with that. Sorry, Paul.
No, that's okay. Bruce Dunlap at St. Paul and then Ms. Liz here at Huntsville High helped me, sent me this data to put together for you guys. Just to, you know, the students take those AP exams at the end of the year, but we don't get the scores until the summer, so we wanted to update you on those. You might notice that the enrollment is down a little bit. It's about an 18.5% decrease in the number of students enrolled in AP classes, but the number of AP exams taken only decreased 16.25. So while there's fewer students taking them, they're taking more AP classes, the ones who are taking them. So, but the exciting thing is the next graph. And that is that the number of students who score a three or higher on an AP exam, that percentage is a lot higher, which means they are earning college credit for those classes. So that's a, that's an almost 28% increase in the number of scores that qualify for college credit. So good job, students. Good job Huntsville High School and all those AP teachers and all the teachers below that who helped to get them there. And then the next thing I want to talk about is concurrent credit. Concurrent credit, I think, is what is affecting probably those AP numbers being a little bit less. There are more concurrent credit offerings now than ever. So concurrent credit are courses that students can take in high school to get a high school credit, but also get a college credit. And so I've listed for you there the courses at St. Paul that we offer. And we had 42 enrollments in those classes last year. And then the courses offered at Huntsville High, we had 160 enrollments in those courses. Most college courses, you get three hours of college credit for. Some of those you get four hours for if they have a lab, like some of those science classes. So that's a total of over, well over 600 college credit hours that were earned by students in the district this past year. And so Ms. Liz Watkins told me, and I wrote it down somewhere, "North art tuition is about $119 an hour." So if you multiply that out, that is well over $72,000 in tuition that was saved by being able to access these courses in high school. And the district doesn't have to pay for those because the Arkansas Challenge Lottery Scholarship will fund a good deal of that for students while they're in high school. And we do expect for concurrent course enrollments to rise because the state has changed it this year, actually the access law, has changed it to where concurrent credit classes receive weighted grades, the same as AP classes. And so that means, you know, in general education, an A is worth four points in a regular class. In an AP class, if they take the test, it's worth five. Well, now in concurrent credit classes, they'll get that same weighted score as well. So it'll boost GPAs and more scholarship offerings and things like that for students as well. And probably cause those numbers to go up even higher than while we're staying. Any questions about those? I've got the expert here in the room, Ms. Watkins, so I'm sure she can help me.
I'm just thinking it looks bad because you got that drop in the AP kids. But I know Liz knows that, like, if I'm going into engineering, it doesn't matter if I take chem here and I get a four. When I get to the U of A, that's my major. They're going to make me take it again. So it really, it helps to take it, but not worry about maybe, it's going to help you because you're going to do so well there, but there's probably people that choose and they don't need to and they can for sure get that college credit with the concurrents.
It really depends on their future plans. So if they do want to be an engineer, it probably benefits them to take AP chem because then they'll be more likely to pass that chemistry when they get to the university.
Right, but at the same time, yeah, they've got to take it when they get there.
They got to take it when they get there.
But I was trying to think of some other classes. There's some that it's not that beneficial to go ahead and do it because you're just going to retake it.
Yeah.
And that one, you're just going to sail through it if you had to.
You look at, you have to look at where they're going to go and what they're going to do.
Yes, and what they're going to do.
Yeah.
Item number eight, superintendent reports, attendance and enrollment. Jane wrote here, 2157. We've been doing a war body count every day. And so our enrollment is at 2157 right now. And there's a lot of movement, as you guys know, at the beginning of the year. So that number is fluctuating constantly. We ended the year last year at 2262. So we're hoping in October, once we have a good solid number, we're a little closer to that 2262. And then I'm going to give you a little update on construction. Okay, so our indoor baseball softball facility, Tenco met with us this last week and kind of went through everything. So job progress, the sheet rock is hung and finished. The CMU is being painted, plywood around the field is being painted. So inside the area of the plywood is being painted. Baseball and softball field is set to be complete the second week of September. So pushing the dirt out, hydroseal, all of that will be done by the second week of September. The netting is supposed to be complete the first week of September. And then the turf is going to begin the first week of September. So this week, they should be working on the turf, but they'll be putting the gravel down, all the base down right now. So you won't actually see any turf in there probably until next week. But it's, it's moving along pretty quick. They actually wanted to bring you all out there and do a tour. They talked about doing it before this board meeting. It's a little too short notice. So either sometime this month or before our next board meeting, they would like to bring you all out for a tour to see the facility. And by next month's meeting, it should be pretty well finished. They'll be doing their final punch with us and all that. It'll be exciting to see. We're very thankful for the Bucklon Foundation, for their donation to this. And obviously, we wouldn't be able to do it without them. and obviously we wouldn't be able to do it without that, so thank you, ma'am. I know we've said that several times, but I just think it'd be exciting when we talk about it. Next item under superintendent reports is the co-op activity passes. You should have had those on top of your folder when you came in. So the list of schools, our sixteen schools in our co-op region are on the back of that. If you go to any of those games, you can get them free, and then your triple A pass would get you into those games plus more. All right, next item on the agenda is new business. So Jay had talked to you about the term lengths that we need to make a decision on, four-year or six-year, included in the packet, what that would look like. So we need approval on either the four-year or six-year terms. Next item on there is the approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six Huntsville School District budget. Mr. Chalk put that together for you and the package there. If you have questions, don't ask me. I did tell Tina I was probably gonna throw some things. All right, next item is property and vehicle insurance. I spoke with Tina about this earlier today, it's not a lot of change. We are, we are gonna spend some time this year just laying eyes on everything and making sure that what we're paying is what we need to be paying. So, but not much change throughout the year.
Not much change, the vehicle or vehicle insurance has gone a little bit, but I'm sure that's your customer's way of, you know, it's a mandatory there, something to change. But I'll probably go back there because caring's always losing.
Last item for approval, I made them sit here all this time, so we have FFA here to present about going to national conference.
Okay, so I'll introduce myself, Kristen Hemington, I teach at Huntsville High School, along with Justin Holloman. But we're gonna let the kids talk more than anything. They have accomplished the ability to go to national trade convention, and so there are some years that we take students because of the experience, but this year, these students have earned their way to go, and so they have qualified through state contests. And, but like I said, I wanna let them talk about their accomplishments, what they'll be doing, and what their week will look like.
Hey guys, my name is Talia, I'm the president of High School for our chapter. And we're actually giving the opportunity this year to go to the national championship evaluation at our science fair. And, you know, who better to talk to than the captain, so I'm gonna turn it over to her.
He knows his place.
My name is Sally Enzi, I'm the reporter for our chapter, but I am the captain for the meat judging team. And what's the crazy part about the meat judging team is two of them didn't even know what meat judging was three years ago. And so that was something that was really exciting to me, is they went from not even knowing how to fill out a scantron, which I'm sure a lot of you know how to do, which is a very foreign concept nowadays. And then now they've gone from not knowing how to fill out a scantron to learning the parts of the carcass. So we judge beef, pork, and lamb, and then we have to identify where that, so we have, we're given a cut of meat, something you can find in the grocery store and nothing else. And we know it's beef, pork, or lamb, but we don't know anything else about it. And so what we have to do is we have to learn the parts of the carcass. So you have to learn the parts of the beef carcass, the pork carcass, and the lamb carcass. And despite what people think, they're not similar at all, like, they're nothing alike. And then we also have to know where that carcass, so where the cut comes from, the specific name of the cut, and then we have to learn how to cook it. So there are certain cuts, like your T-bones and your steaks, instead you're gonna throw on the grill, that you're gonna call them dry. And there's cuts that you're gonna put in the crock pot, that you're gonna call them moist. And then there's your weird cuts that you don't know what to do with, like your hearts and your livers, you're gonna call them dry moist. And then they also have to learn about the meat industry, so they have to answer a questionnaire, and as well as a formulation problem, and do some math. Where we have to calculate the fat ratio on ground beef or pork, or maybe even lamb. I've seen one lamb formulation problem going on the ones I've studied, but we know we don't get that. And then they also have to learn how to judge. And so that's a collegiate level thing. So these, I mean, these kids, I say these kids, they're all older than me except for one. And they all learned these collegiate level abilities as sophomores in high school, and then they turned around and won the state contest. So I was really excited for them, especially as their captain. And then along with that, we got the opportunity to be a national finalist for an FFA agrarian science fair project. And if you don't know what that is, so FFA does have a science fair where you can do specific parts of the agricultural industry and make a science project. Well, both my parents are meat scientists, and as soon as they found out about that, they signed me up. What's better than to have your kid win something, I guess? And I got, I got the opportunity to do that with one of my best friends, her name's Ashley Davis, she unfortunately is not here right now. She's running, I don't know why, she is. And so she and I worked on a project together with some of the team at the University of Arkansas, and they were, we were fortunate enough to have them help us with our project, and we had the opportunity to win that. And then we had to submit our scientific report, which, those are not thunderites. And so then we had to submit that, and we were, and we made the top ten in the nation for Division Six Agrarian Science Fair Food Products and Processing Systems.
That's awesome. What was your research?
So my research project and Ashley was about ground beef patties versus natural and synthetic antioxidants. And so we all know that we're kinda picky about how we like our ground beef. If it's brown in the case, we don't want, I mean, that's how it is in the grocery store. Even though that has nothing to do with how fresh the meat is, it's just something we see, and as consumers, we don't like it. And so we looked at different parts of the industry and noticed that some product people use natural antioxidants, and some people use synthetic antioxidants. And there was talk in the winter about taking away synthetic antioxidants in the FDA. And so that's also why we wanted to use a natural antioxidant, was to prove that if it's as good as a synthetic. And what we found was that natural antioxidants do what they're supposed to do. They do enhance the color, they make them last longer in the cases. However, when it comes to terms in oxidation, so we measured the oxygen levels in the meat, which is really interesting to like, break it down and figure it out. And we found that, we found that natural products don't do, carry as much oxygen as a normal product. However, it's not bad for you. And then, but a synthetic product does make your meat redder, and it will last in the case longer. And then it also has less oxygen, so it retains less oxygen than compared to the rest of, than compared to a normal ground beef patty with no antioxidant and a natural, a natural ground beef patty with natural antioxidants.
Did you look at the cost difference?
No, not really, we kinda used the same cost effective. They were both given to us from the university in Tyson, so it was, it made it pretty easy for us.
That's awesome. And then Jake, would you like to talk about your mother?
Yeah, so I'm Jade, I'm the coordinator, and I'm also on the meat judging team. So me and the rest of my meat judging team, we go to Springdale every Monday for long hours and study all of our retail cuts, our judging, and all of our judging stuff. So basically what that consists of, that we go through, what'd you say, like two or three rails? Two or three rails?
Yeah, a lot.
And two or three rails is like ninety meat cuts of random meat cuts that Dr. Hasty, who is a meat scientist, picks out and is like, know what that is? And I'm like, I don't. So yeah, it's pretty tough there. But, I mean, we wouldn't have gotten where we are without him, because he's taught us everything we know, and without them, we'd not won two national contests in the same month. So we're safe. We also won the four A contests, so.
So with nationals, I mean, it'll come down to they will not be able to miss a reach up at nationals. I mean, they will have to compete, they will have to get it. And Dr. Hasty has been gracious enough to work with them every Monday at Tyson headquarters. And just besides the contest, that networking opportunity for our kids, because several of them will be asked to go and judge collegiately, which will pay for their school. And so there's a lot of scholarship opportunity there, but then the networking and professional opportunity as well. So we love to compete, but however, we are hoping that we develop their skill for careers.
If you never had to stand and give reasons, you do not. To be understood, it's like, it's hard.
It's not fun. We do, especially meat judging reasons.
So where are you guys going to?
So National Trade Convention is in Indianapolis every year. That's a pretty permanent fixed location now. We used to go, yeah, it's all the twenty-third or something. We used to go to Louisville County and sometimes Kansas City, but Indianapolis is headquarters. And their meat judging contacts will be at Purdue. So one day we'll travel from Indianapolis to Purdue.
Really excited. I would accept the motion to.
How blessed are we to have kids like this? Thank you guys so much.
Valley's grandparents, I believe, had their sixty-first. Sixty-first.
Yes, ma'am.
They stuck together.
The names stuck together, yeah. It's a little lot.
All right, item ten, transfer requests, you should have those in your packets there.
I was asking, do we have everybody except, do we have everybody? Can I see you cut somebody out of retirement?
All right, can I get a motion to approve the transfer request? And then make all favor. And then we need to go into executive session to discuss the contract. And we need to go into executive session to discuss the contract.